You are live, your worship.
Thank you, Ms. Russo. All right, council, I'd like to call this special committee the whole meeting for September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three to order with adoption of the agenda. So I want to make that motion for me, councilor Staplers, councilor Cherry, all in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Moving on to delegations and presentations. Development Finance Workshop. Ms. Henderson, Mr. Solomon, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to introduce Ms. Henderson, Nancy Anderson from Urban Systems. She is a senior local government advisor. For those of you who haven't worked with her, right now on TV here. She's going to be facilitating our Development Finance Workshop today. Really, really important for council to get a really good grasp of all different tools that are out there to finance development within our community. And it's a really good precursor for the Development Cost Charges File, that you guys are going to be discussing in the coming months. So I really encourage council, you know, let's treat this as a great workshop and ask as many questions as we possibly can and utilize our subject matter at first time as best possible. Thank you for that. I'll pass over to Ms. Henderson.
Well, good afternoon, council. So today we have a Development Finance Workshop. I know there's a couple of members of council that I've seen, have seen a similar workshop a couple of years ago. So I'm trying to shake it up a little bit. Really see this as an opportunity to ask questions. I have like quite a long PowerPoint presentation that was on the screen previously. But I don't, we don't need to stick to this, to the script. So if you have questions, I think if you want to make it as interactive as possible, that would be good. I know you have the presentation, so you'll have good information if you don't get through it all. So yeah, really just want to kind of look at development finance considering off-site works. So this is all about how to pay for water, sewer, road type exceptions. And we'll also talk about community amenity contributions as well. So we really just want to kind of look at how to finance growth and development, not necessarily just pay for it, but how to create an environment for the developers to come in and have a fair and equitable way of contributing towards the infrastructure needed to facilitate growth. We will look at and kind of be asking questions to council because I know you're about to embark on a DCC review. So as you go into that comprehensive review, it's really important to just start thinking about your philosophy of growth and who should pay for it. I think it will help with that review. I think it's also, I'll get into DCCs a little bit so that you can kind of start getting your mind ready for your review. But Joel Short Consulting will be in front of you in a couple of weeks and we'll really get into details on DCCs. So I'll go a little lighter on that than I did last time. And then just really want to kind of talk as well about the opportunities to secure works and services through the development process as well. So growth doesn't always pay for itself. There's, not all growth is created equal. Different types of growth have a better return on investment than others. And then it's also really important to think about, you'll often hear say that an applicant might say, well, this is going to increase your tax base. Well, it's going to increase your tax base because you need to pay for operation and maintenance forever and the replacement of that infrastructure. So often considered sort of lovingly called like the gift that keeps on taking. There's also a limited ability to generate new revenue from this development being, you know, the property taxes is one. And, you know, many municipalities are really looking at property taxes differently than they did five or 10 years ago. You're seeing a lot of fairly significant increases in, in tax rates of late. But I think there's something that's often referred to as a standard of equity, and that's that the cost of infrastructure should be paid by those who benefit from it. So sometimes existing residents will benefit and there's a portion of that that they should arguably contribute to. But is it fair for the tax base to subsidize development? And these are sort of philosophical questions that we'd like you to start thinking about. So, you know, everyone in this sort of capitalistic sort of economy that we're in, growth is generally seen as really positive. So it's universally assumed to be good. That the pace varies and it's interdependent with a number of other things, quality of life, others, infrastructure, services, level of service that cities provide. And then we've got this sort of short-term revenue and then the long-term costs of maintaining that infrastructure. And I think it's important to really reflect that not all growth is equal. That some growth can be much more revenue positive than others. And then land, you know, typically within your boundaries is a finite resource. So how do we think about the return on investment of how you utilize this land? And that was, I think, a big conversation that the city was grappling with when you did your OCP as well and looking at increasing density to do exactly that. So looking at it, like the fiscal health of neighborhoods or what does financial resilience look like? You can have growth and then the expenses of that growth is greater than the revenue or the tax revenue coming in. And in lower density type situations, that's often the case. And in higher density, it might be the reverse of that. So when you kind of look at these two slides side by side, I mean, this is just about looking at density. There's a lot of the same infrastructure that needs to service the development that has eighteen point eight units to an acre versus the one that has two point nine. So a lot of the things that the city needs to provide is the same, but the tax revenue of the more dense development is much higher. So just in that simplistic state, from a revenue perspective, increased density tends to be more positive than lower density development. So, you know, finding the right financial tools. So we want to see people come and invest in rough soap. I know there's like a deep desire for more purpose-built rental housing, affordable housing. So you don't want to have tools that are necessarily conflicting with that goal. There's a lot of legislations surrounding municipal finance and what you can charge, how you can charge it, what you can and can't do. So you need to be in alignment with that. And then working with the existing financial policy and budget process that you have in place as a city. I think it's something that's really key and this is something to consider as well in the comprehensive DCC review. It's sort of one of the key principles is that the, that the fees don't discourage growth and impact housing affordability. So towards the end of the presentation, I'll also talk a little bit about DCCs and how it may or may not affect affordability because it's often an argument tossed out there when you're doing a review. And I think with everything to do with the development approval process right now, it's the more sort of straightforward and flexible things are to administer. And the more quickly cities can make decisions, the better because time is money. And the more efficient you are with your decision-making, it tends to also attract the type of development you're looking for as well. So some of the key questions, you know, to think about is just, you know, who should pay for the services required to facilitate that growth? You know, what are the community's values and attitudes regarding growth and development? And you see different values all around the province. And some of those values right now, like the province is responding to even in the housing targets that are being set. So some of those municipalities that aren't, that don't necessarily see growth as positively, you know, the province is coming in saying, you know, you must meet these targets. So this is very new, you know, way of kind of look at things in this province. And then how do you attribute all the costs of growth, like who are the beneficiaries? And as you go through this, we talk about the different tools. It's possible to sort of distribute, you know, that. So like sometimes there's people, the new people, the growth is the beneficiary, but there's a certain percentage that can be allocated to the existing taxpayer as well. But it's important to think of these things as you go through this. And then is it clear, like who's paying for what? And the more clear that you can make it as you go into this process as to what's the responsibility of the existing taxpayer and, and the new, the new taxpayer, if you will, really helps speed things up as you go through these processes and, and looking at this as a negotiation at time of development. So just to maybe break things up a little bit, I don't know if council wants to have a conversation just around what you think your approach to growth is. You know, some municipalities are very clear, clearly like, we're open for business, we want to facilitate growth. Others are, you know, we want to see affordable housing, but we don't necessarily want to subsidize or support, you know, luxury second homes. And if you have that in your mind, that what you clearly want to support, the easier it is to make development finance decisions. Even some municipalities are looking at it like based on location. So they really want to see downtown development, but they don't necessarily want to see group sprawl. And they can sort of tailor their development finance tools based on those philosophies. So if council has any thoughts on that, like happy to kind of put them out on the table or if you have any questions or thing that you'd like to have answered through this workshop, if you want to just take a second and then otherwise we'll just keep going into the presentation.
Well, I think we should have that conversation, Nancy. You know, when we, we start talking about open for business, here we will be open for business, but certain kinds of business, so. And maybe I'll, I'll kind of go to that sort of thing where it's like, we still need industrial business, some sort of, you know, whether it's building product or, you know, some metalwork, some woodwork, whatever the case may be, those value-added things that we can support the industry that we already have. And, and then come up with other kinds. So a prime example, we'll look down in our industrial park and, and see what we have there. So we've got innovation as far as, you know, we've got a guy down there that's doing some sort of artwork or metalwork and that sort of thing. We've got the new laundry facilities. Those sorts of things add to and enhance the community already. So that sort of business is what I think we should be looking at. In, in addition to industry that supports tourism, that's kind of how I'm feeling. And, and we're lucky that we still have a segment of the community considered blue collar where they're able to do that physical work and their industry pays higher dollars for their workers. So I, I think we need to be cognizant of that. So, councilor Cherry.
Thanks, your worship. Apologies, I couldn't be there today. I just want to kind of riff on what you were saying. I'd like to see more C2, a lot more commercial mixed-use growth, you know, potentially along the Fourth Street. Something to consider. When it comes to housing, you know, that's a way that we can actually get more commercial space and housing as well. I'd like to see us focus on infill and, you know, lands that are easily serviced. I think there is a market for, you know, those, those high-income earners, those high-priced homes. But I don't think that's what we as a city should focus on. If the ski resort wants to focus on those larger single-family dwellings on their lands, all for it in the right places. But yeah, I think we need to figure out a way to get more rentals on the market, more housing for, you know, our middle class especially. And as well as, as well as leaving the market easily attainable for affordable housing programs to jump in.
Is there, you know, when we, when we start talking about middle class and housing and that sort of thing, and I, and I kind of want council to give some thought to this and then Nancy will come back to you. Is there an appetite for densification where we're seeing people are willing to live in an apartment or condo-style development versus single-family homes where they have a yard and a garden and all that sort of thing? What's the appetite for that or how do you guys feel? So Matt, I'll go back to you just because you kind of deal with that and then I'll go around the table.
No, I appreciate that. I think that's, that's something we need to look forward to soon. I mean, we haven't seen any record rental-focused buildings being built in what, forty, sixty years in town? Up until this new affordable housing project, complex, sorry. This is the cheapest way to build housing. This is a way that we can actually get prices out there below five hundred K potentially for a two-bedroom suites, you know, an attainable or a step into the market for a lot of our younger or less affluent community members. So I'm a, I'm a huge fan of that and would love to see some lands opened up for that.
Great. Thanks. Councilor Staplers, comment?
I think, I mean, personally, I would, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a really, it's a really broad topic to kind of comment on. I think, I think the approach to development, I think we, we need infill development. I think we need all development. To be honest, I think it's not just a matter of affordable housing. I think it's housing across the spectrum that we need. But I think moving forward is really kind of balancing our growth. And if we look at kind of a possibility for a tiers graph and we look at the population versus services is finding that balance. Because I think right now we're a really desirable community to live in. But I think if we increase the population density and we don't increase the services, then we're not going to have that same balance moving forward. So it's really trying to figure out that balance, figure out how to cost for all of this. And also moving forward, planning development and planning our, 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 our fees and services that kind of complement what the, the federal and provincial government is doing. You know, we've recently seen the federal government eliminate the GST on affordable housing. So if we, if we didn't keep that in mind and we look at our DCCs and we adjust that so it's not actually in line with the GST, well then we've kind of negated the, the whole federal government eliminating the GST tax. So that's kind of a quick spiel, but it's a, it's really a, it's a topic that we could spend hours really divesting into.
Yeah, thank you. Councilor Paul, comment?
Yeah, I guess similar to Councilor Stephanhurst, the, sort of the broad brush of where this discussion is right now. I guess just a couple of observations. So finance, finance workshop, not an OCP or zoning. We've recently completed our OCP, fairly robust process, took a long time, spent a lot of money on that. And so that is the vision of our community as, so that is largely a settled question unless we're going to open that up again. The zoning, when we started talking about, you know, what belongs where, industrial parks or housing and that stuff, that's a zoning question which we'll have more, more dialogue. So if the question is more on who pays for what, I think as we go through this, then we're going to be learning more of what those tools are. And the, for sure, the glaring example of failure, just to, you know, the one thing was time. Timely, efficient decision-making is really important. So you emphasize that. And if we look at the DCCs, that was important nine years ago with the new council that came in at that time. Four years went by, it was destroyed in that process. The last council, it was a number one priority for them. We did a little marginal inflationary increase and here we are today. So we're getting that and so it's a priority on our priority list. So on the, on the principles of, you know, who pays for what, that dialogue on the development side. So if we look at development cost charges, and that's just an example, and we'll probably drill in a little bit deeper. You know, the, what, what's fair? And when we look at these sort of more philosophical desires for our community, then, you know, who, who is paying for that, for what? And then how do we enable, for example, the private market to be more effective at providing affordable housing? I guess one comment just at the beginning. There, you certainly qualified it, but the growth is assumed to be good. I, I, I'm not one that assumes that growth is good and certainly not all growth is good. And growth that isn't considering community values is, is bad, actually bad. So if we look at what the community values are, and so that's when we start talking about financing aspects. So on, you know, whether it's industrial land or housing initiatives or whatever, how does this help our, our community? And, you know, for example, Mayor Solzhi talks specifically on the industrial. So one of the problems that we have with the industrial, some of that, that dialogue is you know, this sort of the broad span where our industrial and undefined on the West Side in particular, quite undefined. Again, that's a zoning question. So we're kind of all over the map a little bit here, but I think it's a good start. And the, one, one of the things that when we look at, how do we pay for the future in preserving those values within our community or natural amenities? That was one of the, through UBCM, I was thinking a lot about. How do we preserve these values? And we're losing them because we haven't really sat down and said, okay, like we're going to parkland dedication, all that kind of stuff later on. How do we, how do we protect those corridors? We had that dialogue, whether that was with RMR and then some of the other topics. So yeah, pretty broad, those are some initial thoughts, I guess.
Thank you. Councilor.
Thanks, Mayor Solz. Yeah, so density, yes, I think that should be increased everywhere. I don't think there should be a community that shouldn't be densified. When we're talking about affordable housing and the loss of green space, I think that's a reality that we're moving towards, like not wanting to get the footprint of town any bigger. We're needing to build housing for the middle class that, yes, miss, might have reduced green space, but we have to be conscious to keep green space available in the community. So people still have access to that, whether it's parkland or community gardens. As we continue to try to attract different industries, commercial and industrial in the town, we have to be aware of the staff that they will need to operate these and make sure that we have enough workforce housing to balance that. We rely on tourism to kind of help grow the town, but if we don't have the workforce to kind of keep up with the demand of tourism, then we're going to see complaints coming through that we have restaurants with reduced hours or close certain days and stuff like that. And overall, that's going to be harder for us to overcome. So I think that just has to be something that we consider moving forward.
Great. Thank you. Henderson, back to you.
Hi. Well, thank you for that. I mean, I think what we see here is a lot of different diverse perspectives. And I think it's just good to keep these in mind and to know where the city is at and what council's thinking. And I think the answer to how to finance all this is it depends. And so they just kind of keep that lens as we, as we go through. So some of the challenges that we face when we have these development finance discussions and not only with councils and staff, but with the development community is, you know, the development community is also driven by, you know, getting financing and eating certain levels of profits. And sometimes all the costs associated with that development is difficult to fit in that pro forma or that sort of financial analysis of the development. So if possible, if they could shift that cost onto the municipality or someone else, that makes their development more profitable. So I mean, this sort of adds complexity. Definitely in terms of some municipalities really don't have a great understanding of the infrastructure needed to facilitate that growth. And when that happens, the discussion of what's required as part of a development application tends to go on and on and on and get to be a lot longer and it's seen as red tape. They're very important to figure this out before you approve those developments. But the more that you can be doing master planning and integrated planning in advance, it tends to speed up the process. And I know that the city's been working hard on master plans of late. I think application processing speed is something where now, especially when interest rates being where they are, time is money, literally. And so I think that's one message from the development community is if you can make decisions faster, they're happy to pay for things. If you draw it out, that interest is eating in on, on their profits. And then just in terms of also making sure that you have, you know, money in reserves to deal with asset management and, and plans for paying for existing infrastructure deficits because DCCs can't fix existing infrastructure deficits. So there's, it's a multi-layered process. And then sometimes there's abilities for municipalities to front-end costs. Like you might not, you might have a DCC program. When the development happens, the money's going to come in, but not all municipalities are comfortable front-ending that. So those are the, the types of things to sort of come to grips with. I think one of the major issues and it's really evident in the last few years in these inflationary times is sometimes municipalities are collecting funds and then we, we've just been into like forty, fifty, sixty percent construction cost increase. So the money that you're holding that could pay for something five years ago is now a fraction of what's needed. And, and that's just again, making everything more complex. Some of the things we won't get into too much detail today, but I do hit on community amenity contributions and density bonusing. But a lot of municipalities are grappling with who's capturing land lift if you're rezoning to a higher level of density and, and how to maybe share that with the landowner. And, and like density bonusing is something we'll cover and kind of talk a little bit about that today too. But certainly the lack of resources and the ability to pay for these projects to maybe unleash like one area of the community is very expensive. And when you have a small tax base, it's very challenging. It's much more magnifying in smaller communities. And then again, the cost of everything when you're into steep terrain and environmental sensitivity also goes up. So in relative, things are even more complex than many other places. One thing that we've been talking a lot about of late is just sort of the need for more tools. And there's many legislative limitations to be creative on how to do this financing. And something there's being quite a bit of advocacy for change. And we're hoping as the new legislation gets tabled this fall, you maybe see some different tools in the toolkit. I'll try to touch on what those may or may not be, but at this time it's just speculation. So just kind of jumping in, you know, if, if the developer's not paying for growth, it's the taxpayer that's subsidizing it unless you're lucky enough to maybe get some government grants and things like that to help with those costs. It is very complex and I think your conversation highlighted that, just that there's many different lenses and aspects to this. And then I think the other thing is when we're talking about development finance and especially development cost charges, it's very limited what they can pay for. And so things like recreation, city halls, fire, police, civic facilities, they're not captured in this unless you're looking at community amenity contributions. And we'll talk a little bit about community amenity contributions. And that's one area that there's speculation will be changed to legislation in, in near future. So just some of the different types of development finance tools is like cost recovery, which is like your development cost charges. You're essentially, you know, trying to recover the cost and you're essentially as a finance tool. Local area service, which we also have some experience with is another example. There's also just short and long-term borrowing if the municipality is willing to do, pay for some of these, some of the infrastructure. And then passing and transferring the responsibility onto the developer through developer bill agreements. And we'll get into each of these. We're not really seeing the partnership agreements like they were popular there for a brief period of time, probably back in about the nineties. But there is some sort of public entity partnership or private public partnerships that is a tool that's consideration. Definitely some of those in things like ice facilities, skating rinks, that type of thing, just more, more examples of that. So I think it's a very broad-based approach and it's not prescriptive. So again, the answer to most questions is it depends. DCCs are a very important tool, but it's not the only tool. And it's really important to be like pragmatic and flexible. But at the same time, when you're too flexible, sometimes that takes longer to make decisions. So just keep that in mind. And then some of the key factors that influence the approach is, you know, the type of development. So, you know, if you're really looking for employment lens or affordable housing, you know, the ways you might approach that type of development finance might be different than, you know, luxury housing. And then the ownership structure as well of, of an area, if there's one or two owners, it's a different negotiation than if there's a hundred owners. So it really depends on what's going on. And then again, the municipality is risk tolerant to sort of front-end some costs at times too. And, you know, some municipalities have way more risk tolerance or they have different funding streams to pay for, you know, servicing into an industrial park where others just really feel it, they don't have the ability to do that. The development industry structure is also really important. So if you're in the city of Vancouver with all kinds of this, very sophisticated developers with very deep pockets. With very deep pockets, uh, it's a lot different conversation about who's gonna put in that sewer main or. Uh, reservoir than it is in a, in a community with less sophisticated or more like mom and pop, if you will, type of development structure. So it really depends on the nature of, of industry as well. So these are the development finance tools um, that we generally consider and, and I'll go through uh, most of these in more detail. So in Revelstoke, you know, you have your development cost charges from oh five, oh eight. Yes, there's a very. Small inflationary adjustment uh, that really just reflected, I think, a year maybe two. Um, of late, but they're very, very, very low. And so sometimes increasing those to what they should be is such a big jump. It's also very difficult. And that's where sort of that political lens to development cost charges come in. Um, local area service, like Big Eddie Thomas Brook, you've done that before. We'll talk a little bit about those. And then developer build agreements, um, Mackenzie Village, you have like negotiated development agreements. And experience with uh, late camera agreements as well. Uh, dedicated connection fees is another area where you're bringing in um, to help pay for. Um, is for sanitary sewer, for example. And so we'll get into the fees as we, as we go here too, and some of the different philosophies around them. So community amenity contributions is something that, you know, twenty years ago, I would, could have been having this conversation. And it would have been like, these are borderline legal fees that are negotiated at time of zoning of development. Where you can negotiate contributions towards things that aren't covered in D C Cs, like fire trucks and city hall and. Uh, you know, park improvements, that type of thing. Um, but over time, they become normalized, if you will. And I think are seen as legitimate tool uh, to development finance. Um, there's a few different approaches to community amenity contributions. And then there was also density bonusing provisions added to the legislation and there's a lot of interrelationship between these two. Uh, this is one area that we're anticipating changes to the development cost charge legislation. Uh, and the potential of maybe having community amenity contribution, D C C. Uh, come forward, uh, hopefully very soon. It's something that municipalities have been lobbying for, for many years. Uh, so sort of four common approaches is using a density bonus provision within the zoning by law. So quite often, you know, it's pre-zoning so that you would basically not, if, pre-zoning is definitely encouraged right now by, by the province. To speed up approvals. Um, but you, if you put density bonusing in there, there has to be value to that density, otherwise it's not gonna be a successful program. So if there's no value to the developer, they're just gonna leave it on the table and not touch it. Um, negotiated C A Cs is a condition of rezoning that generally is what adds a lot of time. Uh, to the application process. Uh, so there's definitely a desire to move away from that. If, if moving development forward quickly is a, is a goal. Um, many municipalities are looking at target fixed rate. C A Cs at rezoning, so they're basically saying. If you develop a multifamily unit, you need to pay five thousand dollar C A Cs. And they sort of just have these set rates. So there's no uh, appraisals and things like that. It's much faster. And then sometimes um, it's just sort of a hybrid of, of all those approaches.
Just question if I may.
Go ahead.
So on the uh, fixed rates, C A Cs. Is that a tool available right now? Do some communities actually do that?
Yeah, many municipalities do have fixed rate. Uh, they tend to be lower. So it's more of a marginal increase. They do, we recommend if you do go that way, that you're reviewing your policy quite regularly. Uh, I know of one municipality, you know, that's maybe four or five thousand dollars per unit, but I mean, it was set, you know, twelve years ago. And so if you're gonna do it, that would be also be good to like, look at the real costs. You have to know what your amenities are. And like how much money you need to raise. And then it should really be like a detailed calculation. Uh, but I think what we're, if we see, if we see a community amenity contribution or community amenity D C C. That would be a similar tool where it's like, we need a community amenity contribution or community amenity D C C to pay for a new fire hall. And it's eight, nine dollars and we anticipate, you know, the benefit to growth being, you know, X number of units and dividing it by that amount. And then that would be sort of the amount of the, the amenity.
So if I just may, the, so for those that have fixed rate C A Cs. Is it typically tied to bonus? Uh, at density bonusing or is it just general?
Uh, through the chair, it's often just general. So uh, if something's being rezoned, it may only be for residential uses. Uh, for example, uh, and then it's like per unit and then they would just be responsible to pay that, that fee.
So it sounds awfully, so I'm assuming it has to be very specific project, so. Um. With the current legislation, could we have a community, a C A C for, say, the multiplex?
Uh, through the chair, that would be like, that would be a, an amenity. I mean, there'd be things you would need to do to set that policy up. But there's, there's a number of municipalities that are using that approach. And, you know, like I was saying, like fifteen years ago, that might have been thought of as being, you know, borderline. Uh, but it seems to be, become normalized. And so you would, there'd be many municipalities around the province that are using a similar approach.
So, so it's interesting, sorry for belaboring, but I think it's kind of important. So like, it, it sounds very similar to D C Cs. But that example is not permitted under D C Cs. And if there isn't anything tied to it, how? It does sound, or with the current leg, like I'm just wondering how, and it hasn't been challenged then in the courts, I guess, started drilling in a little bit too deep. But uh, i- it seems if you have a calculation. For something specific that you figured out. Um, is that gonna become, it's, it's, it's just, it's interesting because I wasn't aware of that. And in, in, is that where the legislation or anticipating legislation to be clear on those, those kind of items?
Yeah, through the mirror. And again, this is all speculation at this point in time. I was hoping there might have been some information at E V C M. But it, you know, it's likely that when the, when we're back in legislature and they're tabling legislation, we're hoping. That there's gonna be some changes to the D C C legislation. And one of those changes is a community amenity D C C. So then that would just sort of take this approach off the table and it would become a D C C. Uh, but those municipalities that have those, you know, set amenities in place and set fees in place will be prepared. I think to move quite quickly towards the community amenity D C C. So it's not bad practice anticipating a change in legislation. Um, to look at it that way. I think in terms of uh, challenging it, I think the development community, as much as they don't. Like contributing to uh, community amenities and extra fees and like, there's definitely been some pushback over the years. But if it makes the application faster, because you clearly know what you're looking for, uh, I think most is go on with it. Uh, it's kind of where we're at.
So then the question is, so with the C A C, so we say, okay, we're gonna for multiplex or whatever. Is it gonna be community wide? Is it based on, you know, I know you, I, I see you, you notice there it's a zoning bylaw. So it's gonna be based on the zoning that that, whatever development's gonna be built on. But is everyone gonna pay for the one amenity? Or are we gonna have multiple amenities that need to be paid for? What can we legally do with that sort of thing? And is there legislation at this point where we can actually define them?
But Mr. Anderson, I mean, one, it's again, you're kind of, if you put everything you need onto a list and divided that by. I mean, it's not just for growth, it's also for the existing taxpayers, like the benefit. We take that benefit allocation and divide it by the cost. Chances are, it would be prohibitive to development.
Right.
So I think it tends to kind of come down as to sort of like, we need a contribution to help pay for these things. And it would be the municipality that would set those. And there's gen, like, there's a process that would go through this where you would contemplate, what are the amenities you're looking for? How much they cost? How does growth get a benefit? And they do a calculation based on that. Um, but I mean, I think the, the, from the legal question, I can't give legal advice. But as a planner, experiencing community many contributions for thirty years, the conversation thirty years ago and the conversation right now is very different. And the legal advice is very different too. And I think that um, the legal advice is generally supportive of moving towards these frameworks. But it's all on how you do it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, follow up from anyone? Okay, let's move on.
Okay. So just density bonusing, which is really similar to community amenity contributions, but it's built right into the zoning by law. So for a developer, if you're using density bonusing, it would be essentially, and just like from the graphic here. Um, everything that's white uh, would be sort of allowed in the zoning by law. This is a base zone. But if you, you could do the orange as a density bonus, so quite often that's like, if you. Provide us with a hundred thousand dollar contribution, you can um, have this extra density. Or if you put in affordable housing, you can have this extra density. And it only works if that density has value. Uh, and it's also something that if you do go this approach, uh, that you would also wanna review it uh, fairly frequently. Because performance are changing. Uh, so something that you'd wanna revisit every, you know, five years or so. Uh. So key conditions for success of, of both of these tools is that there's gotta be market demand, you know, for that extra floor area. And under the, the, that the zoning and with the density bonus is financially viable. A lot of uh, municipalities across the province and, and even beyond and into other provinces. Have set density bonus is thinking there's gonna be a windfall of revenue, but that density had no value, so it didn't get built. Um, some of the research now is sort of finding that when that density is closer to an urban center or the, the core of the community. It tends to have a higher value, but when it's off, sort of out into the distance or away from amenities, it has, it's, it's less uptake. So another area, um, user fees and charges, so switching gears here to just another tool. Um.
Before we pass on uh, that, so just a couple of comments. So in Revelstoke, we have uh, density bonusing for housing agreements. Uh, which there's dire need. Um, however, at the same time, it seems to me, uh, and based on some conversations with developers. That that is, becomes a make or break. So, so like Counselor Lucio was saying, that favors, you know, higher density. Multiple places, but the um, and we have this tool for higher density, but it becomes. The, the viability now suddenly isn't there. So we, so one of the risks with that is we actually lose a higher density by not actually having that zoning in the first place. And then when we look like, for example, across the street, lost opportunities uh, on amenity. So these are just general comments, but uh, you know, there could have been some amenity contribution for public space there. And allowed higher density and more retail, which there's a need for. Again, a, a, a lost opportunity. So I think when we look at these financing, it's not so much. The, you know, grabbing money kind of thing. It's what, what really works for, for our communities. So I, I, and I'm sure you'll be going through that, but I just thought while you're on that topic, there's some real examples that we've, we've lost. Um, aside from not having these tools in place, that's it to the millions of dollars over the last several years that we've. Uh, potentially have lost due to development.
Counselor, sure.
Thanks, worship. Appreciate it. Um, I think it's, I think it'd be a, a good time just to recognize that uh. With our zoning bylaw and with what's being signaled from the province, you know, a current density bonus program is probably gonna be obsolete. Uh, I don't, I know we've had a couple of people take, uh, take advantage of it, but I don't see it going forward the way it's written now without some major changes. Um, and then just something else to be aware of is when we're talking about C A Cs, you know. We have to look at the calculations on this to not completely discourage growth with all of our fees, which is. You know, there was a comment before about D C Cs and the rates at which they were gonna increase almost nine years ago. That probably would have killed our growth in town. So. Just wanted to add those two comments in.
Great, appreciate it. Ms. Henderson.
All right. And I think another good thing, just to keep in the back of your mind, just based on the current context, which I'm a little bit familiar with. But is also thinking about the administrative burden. Uh, so if you, if you have a extra unit or two that's affordable and you require. Legal agreements and is it worth it? Because it, it makes the development much more cumbersome. But if you're de, dealing with a two hundred unit building with a sophisticated developer, you know, maybe, maybe it's a, it's a bit of a different uh, conversation. Um, and then, yeah, I mean, there's, I've been working really closely with the municipality that's sort of leading the way in infill housing. And, you know, they've been really looking at, can we do density bonusing, a couple of extra units for affordable housing? Um, and if it's rental, but then it's like, well, how do you secure those conditions? And there's just other sort of administration that you need to consider. Uh, beyond just the cost or, or what you're trying to bonus. So, I, I mean, it's quite a complex tool. It can work really well. But you must like, think it through all the aspects. Um, so in terms of user fees and charges, uh, often people think of user fees to cover operating costs. Associated with the provision of a municipal service. I mean, could be recreation, but a lot of the times we just kind of stick to the infrastructure thinking. You know, it's the cost of providing that, that water service, but we're starting to see more. Uh, fees being collected to cover capital costs, um, such as water treatment plants built in uh, to the user fees. Uh, so there's some different uh, thinking along these ones and some mixed views regarding the appropriateness of this as a, of a finance tool. But when you have like a higher quality, say, water treatment plant, quite often these user fees would be um, where the, the existing resident could pay. Uh, because they're benefiting from that uh, new facility, but then D C Cs would also be charged to, for growth, to cover the cost of that. So you're using multiple tools to pay for one project. Uh, one thing with user fees and charges. Um, you do need a bylaw to establish this charge, but you do not need elector sent uh, when you're using this tool. So capital cost charges for utilities, again, you know, basically where you've got this one time fixed charge as a fee. Um, which is often, and the cities use this before as well. Um. So, yeah, and it's just gotta make sure that it's proportional to the benefitter, you know, so that you're not, you're not charging existing taxpayers for growth. Uh, as well, like just, just to make sure you're not double dipping and you're not paying, um, you're not charging twice. So frontage works programs, uh, this is when you see in subdivision or a building permit. Where an applicant would pay towards basically like curb gutter sidewalk to the, to the central line of the road. Or if the water and sewer, I'm sure you guys have had people come in that have a two lot subdivision and are like, why do I have to pay for this? Um, or like the sidewalk extension is, is a big one that often comes up. Uh, this is one area where there's, it's seen as being a bit prohibitive. Um, because essentially if you need a sidewalk and you have a two lot subdivision, but you've got no sidewalk on. You know, the next three blocks. People are like, well, why would I put in a sidewalk to nowhere? And municipalities are often criticized when you see that, you know, strip of sidewalk. So a lot of municipalities will take cash in lieu. Uh, so you just basically take that charge. Uh, traditionally, the sort of standard uh, interpretation is that. You need to take that money and then when you collect enough on the street, then you would build that sidewalk. And it would be, you know, it has to be used sort of in the exact location that you collected it. Um, there's starting to be some municipalities that are challenging this a little bit. And they're kind of looking at it more as like on the block program. So I've collected a bunch of uh, money for sidewalk in this neighborhood. But I'm seeing more develop on Main Street, so I'm gonna like, or whatever, First Street. We're just gonna put in the sidewalk on First Street. And then we'll keep collecting it. And then, you know, when we have enough money, we'll put it on Second Street. So sort of pooling those funds. Um, and there's varying legal opinions on that. Uh, and that's an area that with infill housing is going to be a major issue. Uh, because you're going to see uh, infill housing be incremental. Uh, it's likely to occur in, in some areas of the community more than others. Um, but if you ask them to pay for all of the, the infrastructure required to accommodate that, say, four blocks. It's gonna, it's gonna prohibit that type of development because they're just not gonna be able to afford it. So there's a lot of conversation going on right now around infill. I've heard some of it at E V C M. How are we gonna pay for all this infrastructure that it's causing? Um, so I think some of the areas where you might see some, some changes or changes in how it's interpreted. Um, so I think some of the areas where you might see some some changes or changes in how it's interpreted is around frontage works programs. And I know of one lawyer that's basically kind of, as soon as it becomes tax and lieu, if they feel all bets are off, and that you can definitely pool those funds and spend it on where it's the priority is, rather than in that immediate frontage where you collect it. So that's an area, I guess, of the law that's yet to be tested, but something I have to think about as you move forward, it's not necessarily the way it was interpreted ten years ago, and lots of pressure uh to kind of change that, but definitely there's a concern about sort of patchwork um appearance over time, and I've seen many councils that come under the gun for the sidewalk to nowhere, so. Another tool is latecomer agreements, and so if you use this in the infill example, it's an area where it just doesn't make sense, because I am doing a fourplex, if I have to put in a two hundred thousand dollar um waterline extension, well, that's now my project's no longer feasible. So basically, um, it just doesn't really work in that context. It works quite well in a context where you've got an area where you've got four or five major developments, and they all wanna go ahead, then you could, the developer would pay for that service, knowing the other ones are gonna eventually pay them back. Um, the problem with latecomers, there's a few problems with latecomers, is that they expire after fifteen years. So you'll see sometimes developers will wait fifteen years in a day, and then they're kind of essentially free riding on on what someone else paid for. Um, and then the other problem is the administrative burden on the municipality. And I'd say like when it's a hundred thousand dollar uh extension, for example, that that someone's got a latecomer, just the administrative burden on everybody's, it's not really worth it. So it's kind of good for big-ticket items of someone who's got deep pockets and a lot of profit to to bring out services, but it nevertheless is a tool um that's worth considering, and you can't use them for DCC projects. Uh, so it's just another thing to keep in mind. So development works and development work service agreements, I've just bundled them together rightly or wrongly, but um, development work service agreements, WSAs, I believe is a city of Revelstoke kind of term, um, would basically like the developer, you know, has like their works and service agreement at time of development. But then there's development works agreement, which is part of provincial legislation. Uh, so they just put them together because they're easily confused. Um, and developer works agreements are a lot like a latecomer agreement, it's done by a bylaw, but they don't expire. Uh, interestingly, you also need elector ascend, uh, and that might be why we don't see a lot of them out there. Uh, but if you had, say, an area with like three parcels um with quite a lot of development potential on them, you know, ideally you can get those three developers to work together to bring services up, but that would be an area where you could actually allocate the cost of that developer, that uh infrastructure to the three different lots, and it would be a way um so that that developer could get the, the one that's expending the money first could get the money back, and it doesn't expire. So that's really the the benefit to it. We tend not to see them used very much, and I think a lot of it has to also do with the bylaw. Uh, but ideally, that type of thinking is where developers can get together, okay, look, if we're gonna unlock, you know, our land, we need, you know, fifty million dollars in infrastructure, how are we gonna give you this up? But again, you can see how this could sort of essentially sterilize land for for many years, and I think Revelstoke probably has some examples um of this. Local area service is another tool, again, there's another, some experience uh in Revelstoke with these. It can be used for business improvement areas downtown, uh, but also extending infrastructures. Well, they tend not to be really a new development tool, they generally use are in existing areas. Uh, but it's a way that essentially the municipality uh would pay for the service, but it's a way for you to recoup the cost, so it's worth mentioning local area service, but it's not really what I don't really see it as like a development finance uh tool, but it certainly could bring services into an existing neighborhood. And then when you do that, it might uh facilitate subdivision as well, uh, so in a way, it's kind of a borderline tool. Municipalities, like when we talk about, you know, employment lands or industrial lands, for example, uh, you'll see many municipalities around the province that will pay uh for servicing an industrial part because they wanna bring jobs into their communities, that's sort of one area off the top of my head that I probably see um see more of this than residential. Um, but yeah, so you, you know, I think you, council's probably pretty well aware of the rules of borrowing. Um, but with short-term borrowing, you're so limited in a small population. Uh, you know, so I think that's where there's also been some advocacy at the provincial level to increase that value of fifty dollars times your population for short-term borrowing to increase that. So especially for something like infill housing, where it doesn't necessarily make sense to pass all those costs on to a small-scale developer that the municipality might need to do some upgrades. Um, but in other, you know, the other thing is hoping for government grants uh as well to help facilitate that cost. Uh, but you do need a loan authorization bylaw for both short and long-term borrowing, so. Um, interest on borrowing may be included in the DCC program, uh, but it does need approval from the inspector of municipalities, and I I know of like a a water treatment plant, for example, where the interest in borrowing was incorporated in the DCC. For whatever reason, um, the inspector seems to be uh looking at interest quite closely, more than the cost, but uh, it is possible to include it in your DCC program. So, you know, this, going back to the beginning and like, it depends, uh, I think, you know, it's really important to realize that there's a lot of interrelationships between your development uh finance tools. So like I mentioned, if you do a latecomer agreement, they're not eligible for DCC, your projects are uh funded under a DCC program. Um, and then, yeah, just in terms of what's the situation with that development, what's the best tool? And realizing, you know, that there's a lot of interconnected legislation with all these tools, uh, so it it is a little bit complicated at times. Uh, internal borrowing, I think, is another important uh thing to acknowledge, um, that you can borrow from your own reserve funds, and it's something that I've done before to acquire a large uh piece of parkland. Uh, so borrow like from all the other DCC reserves to buy that parkland, and then as other DCCs are collected, paying those reserves back. So it's a way to make something happen that you don't have money for in that exact reserve. Um, so it can, you can make, be a little bit creative there. Um, but you do have to, you know, repay those funds, um, and that's just an example of internal borrowing. So just wanted to kind of talk a little bit, I know council brought up, um, just infill housing as we were going around the table. And, you know, the province last uh spring, you know, provided their Homes for People uh plan, which included that, you know, they're looking to table legislation that will allow up to four units on a traditional single-family lot. Um, and, you know, we're not exactly sure how that's gonna affect the municipalities around the province, or in particular Revelstoke. Um, but I think a lot of municipal governments have been going, well, how are we gonna pay for the infrastructure? And, you know, sometimes I I think this four units is often getting pitched, it's well, maybe six or eight. Uh, the city of Vancouver, you know, just is allowing uh six units. There's a lot of shift uh and requirements from four units to six units. Uh, if it's all in one building, you're now into the Architects Act. Um, there's different, you know, fire protection or building code regulations. Um, but it's, you know, how are we to pay for all of this, I think, is a question that's often uh coming up, so. This is one area where, and Mr. Simon has participated in a infrastructure roundtable that was um facilitated uh by Small Housing BC, just around, you know, the tools that we have right now are really set up well for large greenfield developments, but not necessarily for, you know, fourplex developments. And how do we finance, you know, the the needed infrastructure for that? So we're certainly seeing uh some gaps in the toolkit, and we're hoping that those will come out when the province uh ta- tables this legislation. Um, because if you think of DCC projects, and as you go through your your review, quite often you're, you, if you put every single infrastructure um project to facilitate growth in your DCC program, your DCC is likely to be very cost prohibitive. Um, so you generally pick, you know, arterial roads and big projects uh in order to sort of have a a DCC that's at a reasonable rate. Um, but so these small projects that might be, you might not have adequate fire flows for infill housing, how how do you pay for this? What are the tools to collect? So, you know, these are some of the questions that we're asking. Um, and, you know, I think some of the ones like, or maybe ones that many municipalities aren't using, like levies, uh, where it's like, oh, we're gonna need twice as many fire hydrants than we have right now. Um, if I make the fourplex pay for that fire hydrant, you know, it gets complicated. So, you know, do you get them instead of putting a hydrant in to pay a levy towards it? So like, being creative is going to be necessary, and we hope that the province is also providing some additional uh tools in the toolkit. Uh, and if the municipality's gonna need to front-end some of these costs, you know, certainly short-term borrowing isn't gonna be adequate to pay for it.
Counselor Paul.
Yeah, if we could uh just sort of pause on that uh a bit, uh, first of all, I compliment staff because I think we've been quite progressive, Revelstoke's been very progressive in allowing higher infill, including in duplexes uh outside that, and then with our pretty flexible uh carriage uh suites and garden suites, uh, it's very flexible, like compared to most communities. Um, just a question to the planner on anticipation, of course, this has been here for a while, and we're going through our zoning bylaw, and it seems to me that this is our opportunity, we've had some dialogue on this already, but our opportunity to be proactive on the uh, on the uh province statements. Um, there's an irritating part of the of the province, um, messing with local government, there's an irritation there. However, this, I think, is consistent to the feeling of our community of getting higher density, so sort of let that go maybe, but um, the on getting to this, so right now, we can have essentially two dwelling units in single family. And uh, in, when we look at what this might look like in the future, because I think it's a real, you know, there's some real opportunity for us. Uh, if you could just, if the planner could just uh sort of comment, um, sort of from the planner's perspective, where we go through this zoning, like, can we be ahead of the ahead of the curve uh on addressing this in our zoning bylaw?
Your worship, yes, that is the, certainly the intent of staff. And I, in my opinion, we are in a very, very good position, given the fact that we just had an OCP that was adopted in July from previous council. And that OCP that our new zoning bylaw is gonna have to align with gives us a lot of direction to support gentle densification, increased infill. Looking at things like how do we have, you know, on a single-family lot, maybe one principal unit, one secondary suite, one garden suite on there. And the goal of staff right now, and I'll tell you, we're like knee-deep in the midst of drafting all these new zones that will ultimately go up for public, or at least we're targeting the end of November. The goal of staff is to make sure that it's aligned with provincial legislation, so that we're kind of taking our destiny into our own hands in Revelstoke and making sure we have solutions that work for us, that align with that provincial legislation, rather than it being thrust upon us. Now, the big question, and I think one of the key things that Nancy, as Ms. Henderson has pointed out here, is how do you start paying for that when we have infill zones now that are allowed in our low-density areas for triplexes, fourplexes, small blocks of row houses? How do we pay for the infrastructure from the engineering side to make that ultimately happen? Uh, and that's gonna be something that we will certainly have to grapple with as we start to see potentially more applications looking to take advantage of going through the rezoning process and ultimately providing that infill. But yes, we're trying to stay ahead, most certainly.
Oh, yeah, then just on the, on the, uh, you know, how we pay for increased demand, so for water, for example, water, sewer, garbage. Uh, the by having like with the garden suites and uh carriage houses, that's a separate connection that now starts to collect fees, correct? So if you have a, I I mean, that's a, that, I mean, it's maybe, if there, if there's a separate garden suite. Uh, so what is, today is a a single-family house, and they build a uh a a uh garden suite, do they pay to double utilities?
Uh, through your worship, I know that there's an additional connection fee that they would have to pay, but in terms of actual utility usage, enough to verify with the Director of Finance or the Director of Engineering, they know on the spot, but right now, you know, that's one of the reasons why in our OCP, I know we wanted to export water metering across the city, so that would be based on usage. But generally, it's, it's one main connection per property, I'm pretty much sure, Director of Engineering.
So we don't require a second connection at this point?
If 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 there's you're absolutely correct, one service for one lot.
Okay, so that that might be something staff looks at, because to me, there, it seems to me that that is an opportunity in fairness. So essentially with it, if you have a carriage house, it's essentially another dwelling unit that's using a water, so is, and there's a question as to in fairness to that increased demand and the higher densit- densification, increased value of the property, on and on, that uh, the water and sewer and garbage would be would be double. Um, and, you know, in the reality is, when we're looking up to four units, we we can color that by calling them garden suites or whatever, but essentially, you know, does that look like essentially two duplexes on a single-family lot? And uh, that, in in duplexes, I think they both have their own water connection and pay their separate fee. So in fairness to, I mean, we have some pretty small duplexes in the, in the community that are smaller than a number of the carriage houses that are being built today. And, yeah, it just seems like there's a financing opportunity, that, yeah, just some comments.
And that, that absolutely is a good comment, because when we start looking at our commercial water sewer rates, if there's my former building, there's three different businesses in there, there's one line that comes in, everybody pays the same, and they're paying for separate, you know, so there is opportunity here for that.
Yeah, and and just in comparison, so carriage house or a garden suite or whatever suite even, I think commonly people will have it separately metered, so yeah, we don't have authority for metering, but basically BC Hydro or Fortis is having two connections, so that baseline fee for the 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 infrastructure increases over time.
Yeah, Mr. Simon.
Here's, I know Ms. Henderson definitely has some stuff to add on to that, but I can say from staff's perspective, we're certainly trying to align as best we can with provincial legislation, we're waiting to see what that ultimately looks like from a zoning perspective. And with respect to costs, we will certainly be employing all tools available to cover proportionately the cost that is attributed to new development as it comes in. And I will say, staff have been really keen to try and be leading and put Revelstoke a little bit out there in terms of the provincial spheres and intermunicipal spheres, spheres to ultimately get um the needs of the community out there and what we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis.
Right, Counselor Cherry, thanks for your patience, and Counselor Stigman.
Thanks, Your Worship, I just wanna uh comment some of uh Counselor Palmer's uh original comments. Um, you mentioned that the province is getting into city business, this is happening because of a failure of prior councils and staff, uh, as well as another, an older generation and making these changes to the point now where the province has had to get involved. Um, you also made a comment about separate metering and uh talking about how uh carriage suites were larger than duplexes. Uh, we do have a zoning bylaw that dictates exactly how large and small each of those can be, and there's no reason I see to separate them or treat them like a separate legal title. Um, we also have separate meters for uh separate suites in homes. Um, so I don't see the connection there in, if it's, if we're looking for a potential access to funding, sure, we'll have that conversation, but let's not get the the mix up between a party well subdivision R2 home and a carriage suite mixed up, they are very different things. Um, I also want to take this opportunity to uh just bring awareness to the fact that Premier Iby on Friday announced uh funding for the implementation of the new zoning bylaws uh and uh everything that comes with that, I think that's something we should be aware of and going after to kind of keep uh some of these costs off the taxpayers. Thanks, Your Worship.
Sure. You want follow-up?
Just to get, yeah, clarification, so in no way was I insinuating that, you know, the the titles, discussion on the title, all I was talking about was fairness of water use and water connections. And who's
Okay.
So very, very specific, and I think it's very, very relevant, if uh there's one you, one lot that is, has two There's one you one lot that is has two two lots that are almost identical. Except for one pays one water connection, sewer connection the other pays that was. The other, the other thing just further, if I may, just further on Counselor Cherry's comments on DCCs. Uh and we can, we'll have this debate a little bit further to. The DCC review, which, you know, just we've been spinning our wheels for years. Counselor Cherry has said that he feels that we wouldn't have had the development uh if we had higher DCCs eight years ago and. Won't actually know that. That, you know, whether those would have developed, the hotels would have developed, RMR would have developed, the the Evans Project would have developed uh. Across the street would have developed with higher DCCs or not, I think those would have went ahead because we're. Been in a very nice place for a long time as far as an attractiveness for development, other than the likely process to get their their. Uh applications processed in the past, and we largely corrected that. The other is on the on the uh DCC question. At that uh Nancy referred to is on if you get them too high, they become cost prohibitive. And it seems to me. Uh one of the questions that just hasn't been on radars uh for council is. Uh we've talked about problems with short term rentals and that's been a big debate, but we haven't talked about the. The dozens and dozens of the illegal suites in our community. That uh there is a disincentive because of high DCCs for uh. Uh those those suites and that's affordable uh housing kind of things. And I think when we go through the DCC review, that question as to the mom and pop or the uh uh secondary suites. Are those DCCs too high uh and is actually discouraging the development of affordable housing?
Yeah, that's great debate on that and and I'm not gonna weigh in. We have thirty five minutes before I want to finish this portion before we go into council. I go to Council State Nurse, but then Counselor Cherry, I'm gonna come back.
Thank you, Mayor Solomon, I reserve my comment for now.
All right, Counselor Cherry.
Uh with the timing in perspective, I'll just keep it short, uh all four the comments on on water metering. Or looking at different ways to have people pay that have suites, uh carriage or whatever. I interpreted Counselor Palmer's comment slightly differently, so uh just leave it at that. And due to timing, I won't make my comment on uh. Nonconforming suites and the issues with our B C building code. More so than uh DCCs.
Great, all right, uh Ms. Henderson, let's come back to you and move along, thank you.
Okay, thank you, so I'm gonna jump into a little bit of an intro discussion to get the juices flowing on DCCs and then just sort of have a a wrap up about some of the trade offs and things to think about. Um just before I do move on, just based on council's council's discussion here, um just in terms of things that are going on around the province. Uh I'll talk about it, I guess, in DCCs, but generally the ministry is looking for DCCs for carriage homes. Uh they often, if they're gonna let anything go, would be not having a carriage home for a suite. Uh and and we can talk about more their rationale for that later, if you like. Um the other thing is with uh everything that's going on with affordable housing and even the Housing Accelerator Fund uh applications, a lot of municipalities are. Wanting to have amnesties to get those illegal suites on the books. Uh so even just like waiving a bunch of costs associated with those, even utilizing half funds to supplement that. Um and some municipalities are also charging utility fees for secondary suites, sometimes they're like sixty percent, so like not as much as a as a single family, but. Definitely uh thinking around single real estate entities versus plexes, even though the demand on infrastructure might be quite similar. Um so DCCs and uh Mr. Short is gonna take you through this, I know, in great detail, so I just wanna kind of get your juices flowing um before you have that. Uh introduction to your your DCC review. Um but they're meant to be integrated, the benefitter is meant to pay, whether that be the taxpayer or the developer, they need to be fair. Uh they need to be transparent. Uh and they the thing that most of the development community like about them is certainty. Uh so they know exactly what's they're gonna be before they start, where sometimes if you get into rezoning application and and. Services and and requirements are all negotiated, uh that certainty is not there, so that that's the other thing you'll see uh from the province right now is like a push for pre-zoning. Um for zoning in advance so that people could just go straight to development permit or building permit. Something that I I have to say earlier in my career, I I wouldn't have been. Uh that supportive because of the negotiated benefits of zoning, but based on the housing crisis that we're in right now, I I do get it. Um so really, they're just, DCCs are a means of pooling funds from a number of developers to pay for offsite capital projects that benefit them all. Um and again, I've mentioned certainty and like fairly distributing costs across the beneficiaries. Uh otherwise, you know, all of these projects that are in your DCC list are gonna have to be negotiated at time. Of application, which makes for an uncertain process, and that is gonna detract development way more than a high DCC fee. Um and just you just wanna make sure that growth is paying for growth, but the taxpayers are paying for existing deficiencies. And it's best practice to update and review your DCC regularly, I say every five years, so. We've missed a few reviews and and build in inflationary cost adjustments annually. Um because based on the last few years, you can get really far behind. Um so I think we've kind of covered this, uh they do cover parkland uh acquisition and some limited parkland improvements as well as like the typical pipes that we're talking about. So when do you pay is generally uh subdivision approvals for single family. And building permits for multifamily, commercial, industrial, institutional, some municipalities, it is like legislatively acceptable to push. Um for single family from subdivision to building permit, but I really don't recommend that because that's a burden on the municipality because you're. Getting that infrastructure is going in the ground, but you're not getting the money recut for maybe years later, so it's it's not a recommended practice, but it's possible. Um so what can they pay for? Uh basically, transportation, including, you know, active uh transportation routes. Water, sanitary storm, parkland trails and limited parks development, which is like grass, fencing, parking. Can't pay for like a sports field that's uh artificial turf. Uh so there's like a lot of rules there, we're hoping uh that that new community amenity um. DCC would obviously provide funds for facilities uh which a turf field would be considered and and enhanced uh parkland development. Uh but they must be related to growth and not existing uh taxpayers, so a lot of times with parkland, there's different uh calculations that you can look at. But you know, sometimes the cost of that parkland is also shared uh with the taxpayer uh from a budget consideration. So they can cover operations and maintenance. Um fought libraries, fire halls, police stations, uh recreation buildings such as arenas and pools, unfortunately, but we hope that's gonna change. Uh and skateboard parks, tennis courts, all those other things that you think of as parks, uh there's no DCC to pay for that right now. Uh so good DCCs are, good projects are planned well in advance. It's only required if growth proceeds and not required if it doesn't proceed. It's primarily benefiting new development, but it's fair to split those costs uh to existing uh beneficiaries or existing taxpayers as well. Um in towns the size of Revelstoke, you tend to have citywide DCCs. It's possible to have area specific DCCs, but it works a lot better in a large city than it does a small town. Because if you chunk it off, you're just never kind of creating those pools of money that you need to. Uh so good, good uh or bad DCC projects that don't qualify, if like if it's required immediately. If you're dealing with a developer and they need a reservoir to move their development forward and otherwise they can't go. That probably should be a cost to that development and not a DCC project, especially if they're the only one really benefiting from it. And again, if you need it because you've got, you know, a failing water treatment plant, um you know, you need to deal with that out of the existing tax base. Um and if it only benefits a small area, that's sort of ties to that required immediately, often um by a developer, they're just tend to, you need to use the other tools. So this was many uh calculations and I know that Mr. Short's gonna share these with you when you do the comprehensive DCC review. But you basically pick, you know, your total DCC program. And then you take the, you deduct what's allocated to existing development, the existing tax base, so you take that away. And then there's the municipal assist factor, and that's council's tool. So if council wants to sort of uh subsidize a certain aspect of infrastructure, you can use that tool. Um and that's sort of the political lens to DCC, so most the the sort of default rate and most common rate is one percent. Uh where there's a municipal assist factor, but some municipalities have seen even at like a fifty percent assist factor to parks. So it's like the existing taxpayer is subsidizing the future park apartments, and then that's your your DCC recoverable cost. So when you're looking at the benefit allocation, this should be a very technical exercise based on like engineering demand. Uh and on whose benefiting, is it the taxpayer, the existing population or the future population? And then again, uh that assist factor is a council's decision, so. If you're feeling like if these are the needed DCC projects, it should be a technical exercise to determine what those are. If council feels that that's too high of a number, that's where that assist factor, that's your political lens, it's going like, I think this is gonna deter development. We can reduce that number down, but then keep in mind that assist factor is being subsidized by the existing taxpayer. So I always say like DCCs are a technical exercise viewed through a political lens, because I've never been in front of a council that isn't wanting to compare their DCC rate to other communities. It's basically a standard practice during all comprehensive uh DCC reviews. Um but again, it's really the assist factor that you should be looking at, uh because the technical uh projects um are generally the technical projects that are a result of growth. So another uh thing that, another political tool that you have for certain uh projects is the ability to reduce DCCs. Uh and this is something you put your uh comprehensive DCC review in place, establish your DCC bylaw, it needs to get provincial approval. Uh DCC reduction bylaws is a decision of this council, it doesn't need provincial approval. Uh but you can only reduce DCCs for specific projects, so things that have come up around this table today is things that are important to you. Such as, you know, affordable housing, not for profit affordable housing. Um rental housing, so basically purpose built rental housing, even if it's for profit. Or housing designed to reduce uh environmental impacts or greenhouse gases. So those, I've done this before where it was like core area of development where people can walk to meet their daily needs would qualify as something like that. And then you could choose to reduce your DCCs for those types of developments, so it's kind of like an assist factor, but it's like a a further reduction. But you need, when you do that, it's not like that DCC liability goes away, it ha- would come from the taxpayer. So I've seen municipalities make the mistake thinking they could waive DCCs uh to get a a not for profit housing project. Not realizing that when they did that, they actually had to take out of the tax base two million dollars to fund that reduction, so that's just something to keep in mind, it it is a liability when you do that. Um but it is a tool if there's certain types of development that fit in these three categories that you wanna see and and not have DCCs impact. So another thing that often comes up is DCCs affect housing costs. Um there's the research that has been done uh to date on this uh would argue differently. Because it's really only impacting a small percentage of the whole housing market. Because there's housing that's been out there for years that had no DCCs and that's what the market's competing against. Um so it it is very multifaceted though. Um but DCCs aren't simply tacked on to the house price because the house price is gonna be what the market will bear. Uh but obviously, if it's, it might affect developers' profits, in which case projects not might not move forward, so I think that's where you you don't wanna deter that type of development. So some charge reduced DCCs for secondary suites or no DCCs for secondary suites, and the province seems to be supportive of that. Uh I think the way the province uh looks at DCCs on secondary suites is if there is, if there's zero, is it's within the house, so it could be used for other bedrooms or other uses. Um but when it is a separate ADU or carriage house, uh there's an expectation that there will be a DCC charge, and I know of a municipality that went forward with the DCC bylaw without. An ADU or detached um ADU charge and they were asked to add one in. Um it might not be that way, because sometimes it depends on who your rep is at Ministry of Finance, but uh keep that in mind. Um and then apartment DCCs can be based on like floor area or per unit. Uh some municipalities that really want to uh see family size, like three bedroom units, sometimes are doing like a per unit charge. Uh but I think most like to charge DCC based on a sliding scale of floor area, but these are all the choices that the municipality is gonna have to to make. Um the other, the other thing is uh small lots, like getting a lower DCC than a larger lot. Uh just so that it's more generally a smaller home and less uh infrastructure impact.
Counselor Cherry, did you have a question?
I did, in the uh, sorry, you were through through your worship uh to miss. Oh, I'm gonna pronounce your name wrong.
Henderson.
H. Henderson, appreciate that. Uh when we're looking at. Uh just move the slide. So we're comparing DCCs to other communities, uh it looks like they have. You know, their downtown core kind of near existing infrastructure uh at one price, and then as they grow at a different rate. Is that something that we're able to do in Revelstoke? And then my other question is, rather than having it in a specific area, are we allowed to target? Uh specific, I want to choose my words here correctly. Is there a way to tie it to areas that need more upgrades? Than less?
You mean neighborhoods?
I do. I'm I'm choo- I'm choosing that language for a reason.
Yep, no, that's fine.
Uh through the mayor, so, okay, it is possible to have area specific DCCs. Uh I think the slide that I had in there had Kelowna areas included in it, much larger city. Uh it's really challenging in a municipality of this size to have separate DCCs, it's possible, but probably would be recommended based on further analysis. And then in terms of like, so again, I think that answers your question, is it possible to do it by neighborhood, but if there's problems in specific neighborhoods, it's chances are it sounds like an existing. Uh infrastructure deficiency that shouldn't be paid for by growth, something to keep in mind. Um Penticton has recently done a DCC review and they got rid of their area specific DCC. But before, they had a area specific DCC for their downtown, which was less than sort of the the suburban development. Uh but they moved away from that now because most of their redevelopment is downtown, so it just wasn't needed. Um so I hope that answers your question, uh you're probably not looking at specific area DCCs, but that's something that that like you could have Joel do some analysis on and what that would look like. Um and then just in terms of like, I guess, the final point with affordable housing and counterbalancing uh DCC costs is. You can also look at other means to incent that type of development, like parking reductions or best process streamlining tax exemptions, uh that's the most, that type of things as well. So I'm not gonna go over this slide, but it's in your uh presentation, just really, if you wanted a quick cheat sheet on the different tools, it kind of gives you some pros and cons to look at. Um but you know, this is a complex uh form of decision making and you need to kind of weigh out all these hefty. Uh decisions around the council table. Um and you know, I think the one thing I didn't really talk about that. When you look at something like Revelstoke and the natural environment and green space being so important, uh and I think Counselor Palmer was kind of touching on this. But you can also be looking at like transferring density uh, you know, onto those sites. So that you're taking, you're saving green space and taking, you know, density from other areas of the site to preserve it and having more density while preserving. Like that's something like another thing to think about, it's not really a development finance tool, but it's definitely a tool that you have. It's not really a development finance tool, but it's definitely a tool that you have. Uh but when you do this, I think it's also really important to look at the long-term and asset management as well and how you're gonna place all this infrastructure and make sure that, you know, it's a much broader um financial framework than just the development finance and the purchase of that capital asset at the beginning. Um but I know you know that. Um so it's never just a simple yes or no uh answer when it comes to the, a lot of development finances. Very much like, it depends and it depends on the type of development that's uh before you, where it is and what the existing deficiencies are. So these are the questions that we talked about at the, at the beginning. I don't know if council wants to have another, uh continue to have these, uh this conversation for the next few minutes or have a, a larger uh break or a longer break before your regular meeting, but happy to answer any additional questions.
Uh thank you, Mayor Solz. Um so the DCC uh question, we're gonna be doing a lot diving much deeper. But uh just a question through to Director Black, so the approach that's is the sense of the approach that I've understood from staff's lens on DCCs as specific projects for the benefit of the greater community in general, is that accurate? And, and then also on, it seems to me that you've done an enormous amount of work in the last few years on master plans that are helping feeding information, again, that's for the, the bigger benefit of the community, yeah?
If I may, I'm saying worship, the uh, although the master planning work has been based upon the foundation of the OCP and the goals projected uh in that OCP for the next twenty years. And so as Nancy, Ms. Henderson has indicated, if we see development accelerate, we may run up against the need to build stuff faster. If um Paul's um carriage house um extracts more, more infrastructure demands for water and sewer systems, again, we may have to accelerate in, improvements to that infrastructure. And right now, uh we are working on basically that population delta coming up. So I'm not worried right yet on the capacity of our existing facilities, treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant. Only because I know we've got accommodated right now in our master plans, another seven thousand people, including tourists. So we can add a few hundred people in here now in carriage suites. We can add them in new subdivision, we can add them at a new high-rise. But because we don't, we're not up against that magic number of twenty-three thousand, I believe it is. Um I uh, from my perspective, I'm not worried about our capacities, yeah. The funding should fall into place because we have anticipated the growth required to service that new population. And again, it's not based on, based on, or lack of.
Oh, um yeah, so uh I have some other thoughts on that, but I'm up to a question that I have. So you talked about the uh wading of DCCs. Um and the, the intent behind that. So um if I'm understanding correctly, while this be a question, uh could, could the city um, once we finish our DCC bylaw and we increase, say we increase for carriage suites or whatever for or secondary suites, um could council in that scenario choose to waive DCCs for say secondary suites or portion of that because it's addressing the affordable housing issue for the municipality? In theory, and I'm talking theoretically right now.
Uh through the mayor, mayor, I mean, the, one of the, the DCC reduction provisions is purpose-built rental housing. And I mean, I think when, when most municipalities are considering that, they're thinking of, you know, larger purpose-built rental apartments. Um but a secondary suite, if it was not allowed for short-term rental, I guess, could be considered purpose-built rental housing. I hasn't, haven't seen it applied that way. Um cause quite often, there's no charge for, for secondary suites or it's already being reduced. Uh but I think that would be worth something worth further consideration because it, as long as it's not used for short-term rentals, arguably it could be purpose-built rental and you could potentially have covenants or, you know, type agreements on title requiring that. So it'd be worth looking at.
Yeah, okay, I, I reserve my questions when we get more deeper into the DCC. I, I don't, I, although these, you mentioned Short, is that Mr. Short?
Yeah.
With Urban Systems then?
Yeah.
Mr. Joel Short, who is, he's, yeah, he's got his own uh company right now. He's, he's sort of in that semi-retired, uh so he still works with Urban Systems, but he also has his own uh short, Joel Short Consulting. Yeah, as well, should be working on your um DCC as an independent.
Okay, Counselor Cherry.
Thanks, Your Worship. Uh I kinda wanna make a couple comments here at the table and just try to see if I can entice uh a bit of a conversation. Um from the viewpoint of the public, DCC should be increased as a way to uh kinda lessen the burden of their taxes. But what I'm looking at from seeing our, you know, I believe, I believe there was a report last year or two years ago that showed some of our pipes are up to ninety years old in the city. You know, our uh, our sewer, our wastewater treatment facility was built in the sixties with very minimal upgrades. Um so I'm kinda, I'm kinda trying to see how the, the group feels about this. Um knowing that DCCs won't be able to uh use for any of these pipe upgrades, you know, potentially our sewer system, sorry, our wastewater treatment facility, but not uh, not in the sense where tax dollars should have been put together or put towards these projects for the last sixty-plus years. So I'm hoping to see how everybody else feels around the table. And just so that we're on the same page, I do agree that DCC should be increased. You know, I'd love to see a way that they're done uh more on a square footage, footage basis of a development versus how many doors. I think that uh, you know, a, a mansion with fourteen washrooms or eight washrooms, having to pay the same DCC rates as a single-family home, doesn't quite make sense to me. I'd love to know if there's any uh ways that we can scope our DCC bylaw to encompass something like that as well.
So Miss Henderson, I'm gonna ask you that question from a legality perspective. Uh when we formulate the DCC bylaws, you know, can you do that based on, you know, Joe pays more and he pays less, that sort of thing because of the size of their house?
Uh sure, good question. I mean, I think you definitely see that in multifamily, you know, by square footage, not just by unit. In single family, I've seen um DCCs based on lot size. So I think that's one way, generally, the smaller the lot, the smaller a house is based on other zoning factors. And then larger lots would pay a larger DCC. And that would be, so it's by lot, but based on the size of the lot, which would translate into a bigger house. So I guess in a roundabout way, that, yes, there's a way to do that. And certainly see municipalities wanting to encourage affordable housing and smaller lots and having lower DCCs uh for that, that type of development.
Okay, you have a follow-up with that, Counselor Cherry, before I go to Counselor Stavener, or you want me to let the other counselor win?
No, I just wanna say that's very intriguing to me. Um I'm, uh, if you don't mind, maybe come back to me at the end of the discussion, wanna hear everybody else.
Yeah, I wanted to just uh thank you through the chair too, uh Ms. Henderson, thank you for the presentation. I also wanna just say to, to the rest of council, I think it's gonna be really challenging to, to try to balance the DCCs while remaining competitive to builders, to come into our community, to build housing, to build businesses. When you look at the, across the board, you know, interest rates, inflation rates, um the, the lack of skilled labor. I've already been hearing from developers in the community, coming to, coming to me and asking, you know, is there any incentive to build in our community? As opposed to, you know, for example, Prince George. So you know, what I, what I would um suggest to, to, to Mr. Simon, Ms. Henderson is, you know, when we have that review of our DCCs, looking at the, at other communities and seeing what are they doing to, to attract those builders, um to attract the development that we wanna see in our community and, and you know, making kind of a, a, a more informed decision. Cause I feel like this has been a very holistic overview of, of what the C C's can be and how we can, you know, change our fees. But um, you know, I think there's a, a, you know, more discussion to be had as to, you know, what can we do to incentivize the, the building that we wanna see in our community. Um so, thank you.
Good, Ms. Henderson, comment?
I think Revelstoke's in a difficult situation in terms of the cost of construction here, but it's also a very desirable place to build and place to be and just totally cited that. Cause you know, someone has to pay for these costs. Um but yeah, it, it's a tricky, it's a tricky balance to find for sure, and especially when you're up against a lot of other uh cost escalations. But if you, if you aren't charging it, you aren't collecting for the, that infrastructure that's needed, somebody else has to pay and those are the existing, you know, taxpayers. Uh I think the other thing to keep in mind and to go after uh wholeheartedly is government grants. And you know, I think that Revelstoke is well-aligned and even the way you're aligning for density and infill housing and those types of things should position you all uh for those government grants. And maybe spending time there and advocating for those funds, uh recognizing the cost of construction here is also quite prohibitive um as an, as an alternate source. So there's just not one fine to go after, DCCs is part of the puzzle. I think that's maybe another way to look at it.
Great, Councilwoman, have a final comment?
Um yeah, just on, on that comment from Mrs. Henderson. Um at UBCM, was one of the ministry meetings there, staff kind of inferred, if you're gonna be coming cap in hand for grants, make sure your DCCs are up to date. Did I not hear that?
You did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Counselor Cherry, final word.
Thanks, Worship. I'm just curious about DCCs and commercial properties. I don't think we touched on that too much.
Ms. Henderson, call.
Maybe I missed.
Yeah, that, that's true and it's, we tend to focus on housing more. I, I don't know why that is, but it's everywhere you go. Um but in terms of, you know, again, it's a technical exercise and we're gonna look at the commercial growth and the industrial growth as well as the residential growth. And then try to allocate, you know, how much demand they have on, on services and they will get allocated uh their fair share in costs. Uh and then we'll, you know, a key part of the exercise is working with, with staff to determine, you know, where you see um commercial and industrial growth going and it's an equal part of the, of the puzzle.
Good. Uh do you have a follow-up with that, Counselor Cherry?
No follow-up, but Your Worship, I just wanna state that I look uh forward to seeing that as part of the discussion as well in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Black?
I just wanted to uh inform council that if that wasn't initially referenced that we will be bringing Mr. Short at the next committee. You, you, you all know I did not, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's not a problem, Joel's good, that's good. All right, Ms. Henderson, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, thanks for the presentation. Mr. Simon, thank you for your time, Black as well, and Carolyn, thanks for being here.
Anytime.
All right, I'm gonna call for termination of this meeting. Counselor Stavener, seconded by Counselor Lucel, all in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. And we'll be signing back on in a few minutes, Counselor Cherry, under a different uh IRP, so thank you.